Good morning, I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors meeting for October 17 to order. Role call.
Supervisor Foy.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here. Okay, please help me to pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, our next item is the minutes of October the 10th. It's a pleasure of the Board. First and a second, please vote. And that is approved. Our next Agenda review, Michael.
Thank you, Chair Zeragosa, item 12, health care agency, approval of contract amendments with seven providers of various support services to the health care agency. A board letter in Exhibits 1 through 10 have been submitted. Item 14, health care agency, Ventura County Medical Center, approval of a participating facility agreement for health care services with NX Health Network, revised Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2 have been submitted. Item 20, Supervisor Zeragosa, presentation of a resolution proclaiming the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month of Ventura County. A revised resolution has been submitted. Item 21, Public Works, approval of the purchase by the county of Ventura of a 22.147 acre parcel of real property in the city of Camarillo from the Ventura County Community College District for continued operation of the fire training center. A board letter, Exhibits 1, A, B, C, D, E, F, 2, 3, and 4 have been submitted. In addition, Agenda Page 6 was revised to reflect that the item was continued from September 12, 2017. Item 26, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Agenda Page 7, number 26 was revised to reflect the number of cases is two. And there's an addendum Agenda, closed session, item 30, before the Board's conference with legal counsel, existing litigation Poe et al. versus County of Ventura. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any considerations or any changes from Board members? If not, then we need a motion. We need a second. Please vote.
One more vote, sir.
And that's approved. Our next item on the Agenda is the moment of inspiration in this morning, where we have the pleasure of calling Campbell Gill and also Alisa Marinaro, up to the, and the coordinators of Social Work Department, Las Islas Family Medical Group, and they have a presentation and a PowerPoint, is that correct?
Yes.
To share with us this morning, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good morning, my name is Campbell Gill, I'm a social worker at Las Islas Family Medical Group in Oxnard. Joining me this morning is Alisa Marinaro, Care Coordinator, and Carla Alcaraz, she's a registered Nerd Certified Diabetes Educator and a Case Manager for our Diabetes Center. On behalf of Las Islas Medical Staff and Tenderhearted Global Ambassadors, we feel privileged to be given this honor to come and present to our distinguished Board of Supervisors and County Executive Officer, Mike Powers. It all started one day in our tiny little social work office at Las Islas Family Medical Clinic. Patient would come to our office with great hope to find answers to their immediate needs. However, being that Las Islas does not have nonprofit status, we were faced with many challenges to locate resources for our patients in a timely manner, biggest being lack of transportation, delivering resources to those in need. In our desire to help as many patients as possible, Alisa and I took the initiative and started approaching the nearby businesses such as Walmart, Choiseros, Target, Lakeshore Learning for donations, however, we were turned away. With determination and support from Dr. Miguel Cervantes and Dr. Cho, we embarked in pursuing and formed a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Tenderhearted Global Ambassadors, so we could receive donations and pass them on to our patients in need. We would like to acknowledge the support of Las Islas staff members in our neighboring communities who poured their hearts in putting together relief for the victims of the Mexico earthquake. As you can see in the picture, some of the slides are showing what was going on over there. These pictures were taken by a, someone who has a nonprofit in Mexico as well, and he sends those pictures to us. Our nonprofit organization was able to collect donations in a very short period of time, such as clothes, shoes, wipes, diapers, hygiene kits, baby cereal, caps, and feminine products, which were boxed and mailed to Gimnasio de Arte y Cultura about three weeks ago. We're proud to say that the boxes reached Mexico safely and are getting ready to be distributed to those in need. Besides sending relief to Mexico, through our nonprofit organization, we were able to collaborate with Food Share and started fresh produce distribution and senior credit program at Las Islas Clinic. Our goal for starting this program was to promote healthy eating, especially for our diabetic population. We were able to assist our seniors through the senior credit program distribution as well. Once again, we would like to express our sincerest gratitude to Supervisor Zaragosa, Mr. Powers, HCA Outreach Program, Dr. Cervantes, and Dr. Cho for their leadership, generous support in transforming this community and making it a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and Campbell, Carla, and Alisa, you're doing a great job, and also the folks in South Oxnard really appreciate your work, you know, Food Share, and Dr. Cervantes, and Islas, and I'm sure the entire Board really, really supports you 100% in what you're doing, and, but you started a nonprofit just recently, right?
Yes.
Is that correct? We've got two seconds, what are you doing with a nonprofit? Are you collecting money? Do you have a website, or do you have a phone number?
We do have a website, we're working on creating our website. So our nonprofit, we got our 501(c)(3) status right two days prior to earthquake struck in Mexico. So we didn't get a lot of chance to come up with a website, our focus immediately went to help just people in Mexico, and, but we do have a website, we do collect monetary donations, or donations in any form, and whatever donations we do collect, we distribute to our community in Oxnard or elsewhere.
Do you have, can you share the website? Can, do you, what's the website?
Tenderhearted Global Ambassadors.
Okay.
It's under that thing.
Okay. No, thank you so much, and I really appreciate it, you know, I, I think that Michael Powers, you know, this young lady is Johnson Gill's wife.
Yes.
And we want to thank you for, for doing a good job and really supporting the community.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zaragosa, if I could, just, you know, there are so many disasters out there, it's just, I really appreciate you just reminding us of the one in Mexico, which we don't talk about as much, but it's a huge disaster for them down there also, along with Puerto Rico, and Texas, and Florida, and the fires up north, and so, thank you very much for that.
The reason we did pick Mexico was because everywhere where I went, there was a big sign for Harvey and Irma, there was nothing for Mexico. And in my mind, everybody is sending help to Irma and Harvey, nobody's thinking of Mexico, not that I don't have, I don't feel my heart aching for them, so I just, we, the two of us diverted our attention to Mexico, where not a lot of help was sent at that moment.
Thank you. Michael?
I'll just say, thank you, such generous, empathetic, beautiful spirits for Mexico, but it's also wonderful to think that these people are here working in our community every day, helping the underserved as well, so, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and you have that bubbly attitude.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is a consent item, 11 to 18, any concerns? 14? Yeah, Long, let me see, yeah.
I know we have an item 14.
Yes, 14.
A staff member here, it would be good, I think, to hear.
Yeah, Michael, just reminded, item 14, I think, is something that's really important, we have the NX Health Unit, Health Unit, the Robert F. Kennedy Farm Workers Medical Program. Can somebody share a little bit? Johnson? Johnson, number 14.
She gets to watch her dad perform.
You're gonna, hard to follow there, Johnson.
Good morning, for the record, my name is Johnson Gill with HCA. Good morning Supervisors and Chair CEO.
So we just want to find a little bit more about the Farm Worker Medical Program that you have for item 14.
Yes, so this program is, there's an organization that won, the farm workers were looking for somebody to provide services to them, and this organization won the bid, and then they were looking for a provider in the, in the, in the region, and after receiving proposals, they felt that our organization would meet their needs best because of the vast network we have, and that's how this contract came about, or this item came about together. We're looking forward to partnering with them and providing these services through our both outpatient and inpatient services that we can provide.
Any idea how many people we're going to serve?
So, because of the seasonal, seasonal workforce that is in the area, it can range from just a few hundred to 1,200, 1,400 patients.
Very, very significant. Supervisor?
I just, I had a question on this, just as an education piece, so is this our first year of doing it?
With this organization, yes.
Okay, and then are we marketing to our different farmers? I know we have our farm worker program is, I just want to make sure the word gets out because I know that we have more than 700 or 1,000 farm workers in our area.
That's right.
Yes, so absolutely, a marketing plan, we are working on a marketing plan for doing extensive outreach for both our inpatient and outpatient services, and this is one of those areas where instead of them coming to us, we should have been out there, kind of thing. So yes, we have devoted some monies, we have devoted some resources of marketing our services to not only this community, but to other similar communities where we can offer services.
Thank you.
Well, Michael and Johnson, that's really going to help us reminisce, and Mike, do you have anything else you might want to share on this?
No, I just think it speaks well of the system, that they were, that HCA was chosen as the only plan, only provider system, to be the provider under this plan, so, and I love that you're going to tie it in with community outreach, so, it's great, thank you.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
We need a motion for the consent. Okay, in a second, please vote. And that's approved. Okay, our next item is public comments, and I have about eight to 10 speakers, and I'm going to limit that to three minutes. And the first speaker is Hugo Gerner, followed by Alex. Hugo?
Let me take a breath here. Chairman Zaragosa, Mr. Powers, and members of the Board, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Hugo Gerner. Real quick, like, I like to thank Mr. Bennett for appointing me back in 2009, because I've never really had the opportunity to say thank you, that was a significant moment in my life or term, and I'm very, very grateful, thank you. My name is Hugo Gerner, and I have been working over the last couple of years on trying to bring better technology and better policies to the problem of partner abuse. Twenty-six states currently use GPS technology to track domestic violence offenders who violate protection orders and terrorize their victims. In 2017, this year alone, over 3 million women will be victims of domestic violence, and every single day, three U.S. residents will be murdered by their former intimate partner. Ventura County, and San Diego may argue with this, but Ventura County leads the state in reported domestic violence cases, only because the agencies within this county have educated the public about the problem. A lot is being done. I have been advocating for changes in policy and changes in technology that would help the thousands of women and men who find themselves in the same kind of situation, feeling helpless and living in a constant state of fear. This GPS technology has been in use for several years here in America, and the results are a 94% reduction in repeat domestic violence assaults and murders. This device I have here is in use in Boston, this is the ankle bracelet, and the state law requires that the offender pays the monthly fee, which is $5, dramatically lowering the cost to the county. I am here before you today because I believe the county has a tremendous opportunity to improve victims' chances. What I think the county could do is adopt, implement, and enforce locally Cathy's Law, which is already on the books as an option, and then, B, use the latest technology, such as this device right here, that directly, that is directly linked to the offender's ankle bracelet, that will, for the first time, alert the victim before a violent attack happens, preventing loss of life. There's not enough time today to go through all the details, but since this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I thought I should come forward and let you know that I stand ready, as a volunteer, to help you and the county agencies do what 26 states across America are already doing, saving lives. So what I would like to propose is, you pull together a working group to start an 18-month pilot program using Cathy's Law and my Please Alert Me program, with a group of 10 offenders and 10 victims who qualify and opt in to the pilot.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is Alex, Speaker, excuse me, is Alex now, followed by Richard McInnes? Go ahead. Michael?
If I could, thank you, Mr. Gerner, particularly on your IT idea, could you share that with our Assistant CEO, Matt Carroll, who's behind you back there? So he'll connect up with you.
Thank you, I was going to ask, you know, I didn't want to interrupt the Speaker, but... And I think Hugo's been here in the past too, you know, we, he was working with the Sheriff's Department, I think, last year or so, but I think, you know, talk to Matt, he's standing by back there.
It does sound like a fabulous idea, if it's, can be, you know, lethal.
It's going to take some time, and it's a longer conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Alex, and then followed by Richard.
Good morning, Chairman Zaragosa, Mr. Powers, members of the Board. I'm here to discuss the cultivation of industrial hemp in Ventura County. And now, I don't want the Board to confuse that with cannabis cultivation, because they are two separate products. And with the Prop 64, California now allows the cultivation of industrial hemp, under certain guidelines laid out in the regulations. And the purpose of this is to raise the awareness to the Board that this, this is allowed now, under the new state regulations. And currently, in 2015, the top four products for agriculture were strawberries, lemons, raspberries, and nursery stock by value. By land, it was avocados, lemons, strawberries, and celery. Strawberries, for example, produced about $6,000 per acre per year at 11,000 acres, for over $600 million in value. Now, the value of industrial hemp is roughly two to three times that per acre, and extrapolating that out, 600 million, we've got over a billion-dollar industry in industrial hemp. Now, the long history of Ventura County and agriculture is, is well noted, there's been several studies on the economic impact, and even 25 years ago, this was a billion-dollar industry, with 1.25 billion in supporting industries. And then in 2015, it was 2.2 billion, with another probably 2 billion in supporting industries. And if we can raise, you know, some of this value, up to two and three times that, the county then benefits by additional tax revenue, additional spending, local spending, and one of the, the values of industrial hemp is, under the federal farm bill of 2014, that they are currently allowing authorized hemp seed cultivars that contain less than 3/10 of 1% of THC. So there is minimal psychoactive ingredients in the industrial hemp. There are many uses for industrial hemp, including fibers and textiles, they use it in, to produce hemp seed oil, they use it to produce medicinal CBD, and a whole slew of other products. You can ground the roots up and make lotion, you can ground the entire stalk up and make a powdered product that can then be used for textile purposes, to create tarps and canvases, and even sails for boats. All of these are potential products, and then, the growing industry worldwide was over a $30 billion industry, and export for these hemp products has been increasing, and is scheduled to increase to over $50 billion in the next 15 years.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you very much.
Just a, just a quick question for you.
Yes.
I keep hearing conflicting information about how much water hemp uses relative to other crops, what's your opinion of that?
Hemp use is actually less than other crops. One of the...
Thank you, Alex.
Just for your information, you may know that our Board has already taken a position to have our staff bring back the potential for allowing it here in Ventura County, for many of the reasons that you stated.
May I address that, ma'am?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
The current regulations do not delegate authority to the Board of Supervisors to determine whether industrial hemp can be grown in the county or not. They delegate authority to the Agricultural Commissioner to ensure that the requirements are met, although he doesn't have a discretionary authority to issue such registration.
And we're working with county council on that, on the same terms. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we have Richard McInnes, followed by Cotton Davis.
Good morning, my name is Rick McConney, I live in the Santa Monica Mountains, and I'm here today to bring to your attention the extreme fire danger that we face there. Ventura County has arguably the most severe fire danger in the world, in the Santa Monica Mountains. Not a lot of people really understand that. Let me give you three little examples that I will use to verify that. A week ago, Saturday night, I went to bed, and it was foggy, humidity was 97 degrees, 97%, by 8:00 in the morning, the humidity was 16%, and we faced wind gusts of 80 miles an hour. This is documented with a weather station that I maintain on my property. The second thing is, an example of, a few years ago, I went to bed at 10:00, mild winds. At 2:00 in the morning, the winds reached 90 miles an hour. By 8:00 in the morn, 9:00 in the morning, they reached 100 miles an hour, and two hours later, it reached 109 miles an hour, and this is documented by the Western Regional Weather Center, which maintains a weather station at Laguna Peak. Think about what it would be like to wake up at 2:00 in the morning, in the dark, to the smell of smoke, with fire driving at 90 miles, fire being driven at a 90 mile an hour rate at you. Whatever you have done to protect yourself, you better have done it before that fire came, because you will have no time, no time, to adjust to it at that moment, particularly when you turn off the lights, on the lights, and there's no electricity, and you know it's coming at you. What have you done to protect yourself? The third piece of information to document this is, while looking at major weather events in the United States and its history, in 1992, Laguna Peak registered a 125 mile an hour wind gust.
That's a lot.
The problem is, is that Ventura County is continuing to erect obstacles to property owners and residents to defend themselves. You now require that we cannot clear more than 100 feet of chaparral around our property. I know that in the 2013 fire, where winds hit 82 miles an hour at my weather station...
Richard, thank you so much for that, thank you so much for the advice, and it's good advice, especially what's happening now here.
I just would like you to instruct staff, which seem to be tone deaf on this issue, to somehow review their stuffs in light of the dangers that we face.
Our firefighters are working on, thank you so much for that advice.
I do know that, in some instances, our fire department does ask that you do 200-foot clearance where possible, too.
That's right.
So that is something to work out.
But it's good advice, thank you for sharing that, especially what's happening now here in, in California. Okay, let me see, Cotton Davis, followed by Monica Gray.
Good morning, and I want to thank you again for allowing me to speak to you regarding my colleagues and I and our need for a wage increase. Basically, I was reading through the Wall Street Journal a few days back, and I came across an article that said we are an aging population to the point where the average age of the American population at this time is 56 years old, and in 13 years, in 2030, it's going to be 65 years old. And there's a looming major health crisis about to hit the country. And basically, I wanted to bring out a couple of quick points about this situation relative to in-home care workers and the elderly here in this county and across the country. Basically, as the population ages, of course, there's going to be more and more people who, although they can maintain their, their payments, their monetary position, maintaining their home with their rental, or paying their mortgage by way of their pensions or Social Security, these folks are gradually, in their advanced years, going to be, many of them, without family members or friends to help care for them, when they become incapacitated. And basically, as the population ages, we're going to find more and more people in such great need, and the profession of, let's put it this way, there was a recent State of the Region report that stated flatly that in-home care, in-home support care workers are among the 10 most, the 10, the profession that's most in demand, among the top 10 in the county. And therefore, obviously, that's because there is, are fewer care workers than there is, than there are people who need them. And this profession really needs a boost in the, in the, in the, in the wages in order to attract more caregivers, more, more people to take care of all these folks that are obviously in the future going to be residing in nursing homes if they don't have, even though they can pay for their, their rent and their, and their mortgage, they're, they're going to have to be moving out into nursing homes if there's not a family member or friends to take care of them in their advanced years.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
So, therefore... So therefore, basically, we need help. And this profession needs to attract great numbers of people to care for the advanced aged.
Thank you for sharing, yeah.
And so I'm just, I just want to make a strong appeal for you folks to take some action, get our wages equal to the basic wage in this county. A living wage has been determined to be $13.39 an hour. And we're making 12.50. And again, there are parts of Northern California that are up to $14 an hour. So with that, I just want to leave you with those thoughts, and I want to thank you again for accommodating
Thank you.
us and my little talk to you today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Monica Gray, followed by Clemencia Orozco.
How's it going? It's Tuesday, back again. Why not cause a ruckus? First, I'll start by thanking everybody in here that's in a purple shirt, everybody that takes on the responsibility of caring for family member or loved one. That's not an easy job, and they probably do need a wage increase because, you know, it's not cheap to live here. This lovely little token that I made for you guys, this is a monarch. This represents DACA students and the defense of them, because we're all humans at the end of the day. You keep hearing this national debate about the makers and the takers. I don't know. Anytime I'm on campus and I see the DACA students getting together, they're either helping, fixing, doing, learning, studying. They have to fight tooth and nail just to be here and get left alone. You know, they say it starts up here at the top and it comes all the way down here, and it's so true. We're depending on you guys to show your compassion, no matter what kind of opposition, no matter what kind of voices you're hearing from higher above you, in every situation, whether it be compassion for cannabis patients, wage increases for home healthcare providers, defense of, you know, migrant education. And even just the term dreamers kind of bugs me because, you know, not just people that are here pursuing education are worth compassion and dignity and respect. And got to say, the ICE enforcement, all the stuff you hear going on in the county about, you know, checkpoints and people getting stopped, people terrified to speak out. You know, that Domestic Violence Awareness Month? I couldn't help but notice that you guys created a program within the District Attorney's Office to reach out to victims of domestic violence who might be hesitant to speak out against their perpetrators. I got to say that in December of 2012, that was the one time I was ever happy to see a sheriff, was when they came to my house and rescued me. My ex-husband had beaten me so severely that I had a broken nose, four broken ribs. It sucked. Even thinking about it now gets me a little worked up, so whatever tracking thing that guy was talking about, sign me up. Because within a couple of years, that jerk will get out, and then I'll have to worry about it. I was fortunate enough to have friends and family that took me in. After that was done to me, I had a place to live and people to help my kids and I recover from it, and I'm grateful. So no matter what situation it applies to, show your compassion and defend the people in your county. Thank you.
Thank you. You can hand that to the clerk. Thank you. Clemencia Orozco, followed by Lamont Pearson. Good morning.
My name is Clemencia Orozco. I'm a caregiver for William Home Support Service. I am taking care of this person that he has no family, no, no close friends, so I'm taking care of him. He's my neighbor. And he, he doesn't have enough hours, so I have not a lot of money to support myself to pay rent. So we need a raise, and we also need benefits for, for us. We getting old and nobody's going to, who's going to take care of us? We have no families who can support us. So we need a little bit more money and benefits and to, to keep helping these people that need the help, that have no families. So it's, it's why I'm here today, for you to have this, this, in this place. So we need everyone's support. In order to get that, we need to pay rent, and it's not enough money. We worry because it's not enough to pay rent and for food and things that we need, medical, things like that. We cannot afford all that with, with the little money that we can pay. So it's, I think I said the most important thing, and I hope that we get everyone's support, that we can keep ahead, helping people and all the people to help us. That's all for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing. Lamont Pearson, followed by Maria Rodriguez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Councilmember Bennett, for your well wishes the last time I was here. I want to give time where time needs to be given to certain individuals who work for the probation office, the sheriff's office, and also the District Attorney's Office. First, I want to talk about probation officer Juan Garcia. I know this man to do his job in a very cowardly manner when he has reports that he should ask people their input and their spaces on that report to ask these people their input before sending these people to be prosecuted from the District Attorney's Office. Yeah, he should make contact with that person instead of making his own decision of, oh, well, you know, this is a bad person. Bull, BS. I want to talk about Scott Peterson in the District Attorney's Office and what a coward he is, okay? When somebody walks into that office, Mr. Peterson, and comes to you wanting to report a crime that's being committed against them, you do not stick out your recorder and record them in secret and then sit there and tell them, don't ever come back to this office again. Where are you at? I'd like to see you come down here and explain yourself. I'd like to see Juan Garcia come down here and explain himself. I'd like to see Tracy Khan. I'd like to see her explain herself. When she denied me my medications, right here, I go to, have to go to Target Pharmacy. I have to get meds. I don't get to see my doctor because she decided to go against standing orders that say I have a right to see my doctor. She does not have a right to come between medical care, okay? And that, and, and that claim has already been filed in this county's office, okay? I want to talk about Detective Kelly Rourke. And when I had a sit-down interrogation with him and I told him the truth, the whole truth, and, and nothing but, and instead, what do I get for my efforts? I tell the truth and I get arrested for it and I get prosecuted? Where's he at?
Lamont, Lamont, address aboard, you know.
Yeah, I'm upset.
Yeah.
You're right, because guess what? There's a lot of safeguards that go in place that weren't followed, and they weren't followed, which brings me here now. Don't you get that? Us talking here today is a byproduct of all the mistakes that were done in all three offices off of lies. And nobody's apologized. So you know what? I invite these people to come down here the next time we have another meeting, and I'd like to sit there and hear their, their, their excuses.
Our next speaker is Maria Rodriguez.
Get your medicine, Phil.
Maria Rodriguez. Hi, good morning.
I just want to say that I take care of my mother. She's 89 and has Parkinson's and dementia, and it's a full-time job, day and night. I didn't expect to be working nights. Can't leave her alone because she needs us, she needs help. And it is after I worked in stores and then in banks for 20 years and as a preschool teacher for 24, almost 24, then I retired thinking I was going to travel and do a little bit of fun stuff. Instead, she started having, she went on for a little bit of dementia to the Parkinson's. So now it's very hard to be left alone day and night. And I didn't really intend to fully retire when I did, but then I saw that she needed me. So I stay, completely retire from my preschool teaching and, and stay with her. The funds that we do get, it is, it is a great help to get anything that she needs, almost everything that she needs. But of course, if I wasn't taking care of her full-time day and night, then I could probably go back to teaching at least part-time. It's, it's hard to plan for anything like this because we are living longer and I think all of us in here are going to be needing a lot of care. We need to plan for more, more of the same care. I'm not sure where we're going with the funding or where we're going with the hours that we get paid because, of course, I'm not getting paid what I was getting paid as teaching, but it helps. And with everything getting higher in prices, including housing and everything else, we all need to plan for what's coming. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard. I've been, I, I was not prepared, I guess, for what, for her getting worse and for me staying there full-time day and night. And all the way from, because of the dementia that's in her, the Parkinson's, she's in a, she's in a wheelchair. It's just not something that even though we planned it, we, we're going to be that ready for. It would be nice to have like a full-time helper and be able to pay her, but I mean, that's, that wasn't planned and maybe from now on and for my own care, because she could, she's concerned about me. She's, who's going to take care of you, she tells me. I go, I'm not going to be here, don't worry about it. She makes me laugh. Anyway, I like to keep a sense of humor, so that's my only help right now so far, so please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria.
Being a preschool teacher helps.
Let me share with you, we, we really thank all of you for the good work that you do, for, for your parents, for your siblings, for everybody, and it's tough work, and we want to thank you for being here and sharing this morning, all of you.
She, she asked me, how was my dad? I said, oh, he passed away a year ago, and, and he loves you very much, and he misses you up in heaven. He goes, let him take you first.
Thank you so much. Subvener Bennett.
If, you know, from time to time, it's, it's hard to comment each time that you're here. But when you listen to Ms. Rodriguez's comments and, and the comments of the rest of you, it just reminds me that there's a special dignity that you are bringing to our society by taking care of these people. And I just want you to know that it's recognized, that it's important to us, and at the same time, it's, it's important for you to know that it, it's not just what the Board of Supervisors wants to do, but it's, we're constrained by this strange funding formula that we have with the federal government and the state government and, you know, how much are they willing to pay of raises and all that, all of that. But those complications certainly limit things, but it's not, it doesn't limit the dignity and respect that, that we offer to you for what you do out there. We just have, we have these, these other complications. If I was king in this country, I would elevate the status of people doing the work you're doing at a national level and, and the national funding for that. But I'm not the king, I'm, I'm here. But it is, it is important that you, that you hear how the whole Board of Supervisors values the work that you do in spite of the issues that, that our national government and state government are throwing at us in terms of fiscal help, in terms of handling this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing this morning. Okay, our next item is board comments on Silver Azure Parks.
Well, we know that's coming Saturday is our senior summit. We have just about filled up and we're looking at a waiting list now, but in the past, we have been able to get people on the waiting list in. And this year's summit at Cal State Channel Islands is specific to looking at technology and how seniors can use technology to increase their, really, quality of life. Additionally, I was able to attend a gathering regarding the wildlife crossing at Liberty Canyon, and they are moving forward and they are getting contributions. They've got a few million now, but many millions to go. At this time, I have no closing and honors, and that completes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Subvener Bennett.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and one in particular, a real standout community member in the Ojai Valley, Alan Jacobs. He was, he's been a long-term lawyer in the Ojai Valley and has worked on so many different projects for the community. Just one of those people that's, it's the complete opposite of being self-centered. It really cares about the community and has done an enormous number of things. A great family man, loyal, loyal to his friends and the organizations there, so he'll certainly be missed in the Ojai Valley. I'd like to recognize the fact that we do have these fires that really point out the unique dangers that, that we have here in Ventura County, and I'm sure we'll hear more about those as we go forward. The, at the same time that these fires are going on and all of these other disasters are going on on Friday, I don't think you can be in the business of county, of providing county services, working for Ventura County, and not point out that Friday, the president has taken action unilaterally to cut the funding for the Affordable Care Act in terms of the mandates for insurance. And while, while we sit here with our very secure insurance policies ourselves, we have to think about the millions of Americans who got insurance and what kind of lifeline that has been for people, and the millions of Americans who are at risk of losing their insurance coverage because of these cuts. And in California, things will be better, but in this country, I should say, things will, they're in better shape in terms of the impacts of these cuts. But in this country, that decision on Friday alone that will raise rates will cause millions of people to lose their ability to pay for their coverage. And it's a tragedy that is out there that this, if you can't, if you can't replace the Affordable Care Act, you don't have the right to destroy it if you're not willing to replace it. And Friday's action was an attempt to try to destroy it at the expense of millions of people, not, not an attempt to replace it. Thank you.
Thank you, Subvener, Subvener Long.
Yes, thank you very much. So as we're always looking at economy for our county, we, my office went on a tour for the Ryder and Driscoll Farms. As we know, the farming is decreasing in acreage on strawberries and so forth. We are learning about the new agriculture advancements, elevated substrates. How do we assist our farming in making sure that our farm workers who are getting older, as we share the market with Mexico as well, how we keep our labor working? And so also the challenges that they have due to labor, water, and legislation, creating very tough for our economy in Ventura County and making sure that, right now, we're at the lowest strawberry acreage since 2003. And that's on information that comes from the pesticides and so forth. Also broadband, thank you so much to everyone. Thank you so much to everyone who attended that meeting. It is definitely a conversation on internet interrelationships and dependency with almost everything we do. And that's gonna be a key for us to be vital in Ventura County. The Dig Once policy is, is going to be something we'll have to work with all of our cities on to make sure that we are doing what's best to keep businesses here and attract businesses and also our constituents. Lastly, I just wanna thank St. John's Hospital for the eight years of their breast symposium that they are doing. It was well-attended, over 300 people. And we have an upcoming Wildlife Corridor Meeting on October 25th. It will be at the Fillmore Active Adult Center at 5:30. We are talking about all the items in relation to this new plan. One thing, as we know, we just talked about fires and how important it is to make sure that our community is safe. Hopefully, we will have a report back from our fire department as to the health of Ventura County and also up north. And then lastly, I'd like just to adjourn in memory, we had one very, well, there are very many important people, but I'd like to have Paul Grossgold, my chief of staff, come up to talk about Dr. Edward Feldman. He knew him personally and I thought this was a great chance to state that.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Thank you Supervisor Long for allowing me to say a few words about Dr. Feldman. He passed away on October the 3rd in San Diego surrounded by his family. Although he spent the last couple of years living in San Diego, he was a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. Thank you Supervisor Parks for allowing me to do this also. And he was also a prominent physician, had an OB-GYN practice in the community for a long time. But I want to speak to, just briefly about his service in Vietnam. He started his medical career as a Navy doctor in 1967 and 68 in Vietnam where he often performed major medical procedures on the battlefield in the open to save the lives of wounded Marines and soldiers. And I wanna just touch on two incidents that really indicate the service that he rendered. The first was during the siege of Khe Son on January 21st, 1968, where he was awarded the Silver Star for Valor. And I'll just read a brief excerpt from his certificate. When, excuse me, "When the Khe Son Combat Base came under heavy attack, a wounded Marine was taken to the battalion aid station with a metal object protruding from a wound in his abdomen. Lieutenant Feldman directed the erection of a sandbag barricade around the patient over which he would attempt to operate. And he also summoned an ordinance expert to identify the object and assist in removing the suspected explosive device, and it did turn out to be a live rocket-propelled grenade. Displaying exceptional professional ability while performing the delicate surgery under flashlights, he succeeded in removing the live round from the Marine. Of course, saved his life and as a postscript to that story, he ended up delivering that Marine's son some years later in New Jersey. He was also awarded two Bronze Stars for Valor. In one of those occasions, he was actually put in for the Medal of Honor by a company commander. And I just, a brief synopsis of that event was in September of 1968 in Kwangtri. Dr. Feldman was airlifted to the edge of a violent firefight where wounded soldiers needed medical assistance. A column of armored assault vehicles was being attacked by a battalion-sized North Vietnamese force. Healed of the enemy's small arms fire, Dr. Feldman rushed to the head of the wounded, the head of the column, worked his way down, attending to the wounded and encouraging the men, all while exposing himself to enemy fire. So not only was he the only doctor on the ground there, he also realized at that point, he was pretty much the only officer. Most of the command personnel were down. And so he took tactical command of the unit, providing command leadership and guiding the men in forming a defensive perimeter. He had the soldiers clear a landing zone where he called for a helicopter to evacuate all the wounded and dead. And remarkably, rather than departing on that medevac, he chose to stay on the ground overnight until the next day when he was relieved by senior army leadership. The, he was put in for the Medal of Honor by the company commander, Lieutenant Colonel John Langston. Now that you know the story, these are the colonel's words in the after-action report. "As I continued to monitor the battalion and A Company frequency, I discovered a Navy doctor, whom I later learned was Lieutenant Edward Feldman, had arrived by helicopter in the battle area. He immediately undertook the task of caring for A Company's wounded. Apparently Lieutenant Feldman, determined with night closing in, the only way to successfully effect the evacuation of A Company, many casualties, was to reform the widely separated elements. He located a new defensive position atop a nearby prominence. Exercising an obvious innate leadership ability and assuming responsibility for what would have proved a difficult task for even an experienced infantry officer, Lieutenant Feldman took command of the situation and led the men of A Company in successfully completing this difficult maneuver. Later that night, while still monitoring the radios, I listened as Lieutenant Feldman called for a CH-47 helicopter to medevac the Company's remaining dead and wounded. Had, Lieutenant Feldman had chosen not to leave but to stay on the ground where his leadership and encouragement were needed most. It is my opinion, speaking as a combat experienced company commander and career army officer, that if it were not for the skillful and courageous leadership of Lieutenant Feldman, many of A Company's wounded would have perished. Moreover, the several elements of the Company would have been, had they remained separated, isolated and destroyed piecemeal by the enemy. Therefore, for his conspicuous acts of gallantry, at risk of his own life, over and beyond, over and above the call of duty, I am recommending that he be awarded the Medal of Honor." So I think you can see, I know Ed was a, was a humble man. He would probably not be happy about me relaying these, these stories, but you know, they, you never know when the guy next door or the, or the woman next door is a hero. So I, I knew, I met him when I was at the base and stayed in touch off and on over the years. And I appreciate you allowing me a few minutes to read this tribute and I know his family will be very appreciative. Thank you.
Paul, thank you very much for sharing that. I know with Vietnam War, we are celebrating the 50 years and you and I, we just went to the 242nd birthday of the Navy. It's a great celebration and there's some wonderful people out there.
Paul, thank you, thank you for sharing. You know, we have so many brave individuals that really were not recognized and it just, thank you for sharing because we also have a lot of people that are in the service or were in the service, but thank you for sharing and I think it's important that we understand and hear what some of those heroes have done for us. Thank you for sharing.
And you're just blown away at his heroic efforts, something that you could definitely do a movie on, you know, but thank you for sharing that.
Thank you so much.
I agree with you, Paul. Thanks for doing that. And I just wanted to adjourn in memory of people on this list. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Foie. I have a couple of items here I'd like to share with the board that I attended the Ventura County Fire Department promotional ceremony at Padre Sarah in Camarillo. And I just want to share with you that some of those young firefighters and individuals that worked for the fire department, not just firefighters, but staff, were in really good hands. You know, they, it was a great ceremony. It was an honor for me to, to be the guest speaker there Thursday. Also, I attended the Oxford Revival Center Third Annual Resource Fair at Real Elementary School in El Rio. And again, Mike, I just want to, and board members, our people were there, you know, the HCA and HSA and probation and they had, they were given free flu shots and, and there were several hundred people, there may be a thousand people there at that revival center in El Rio. It was just a great program. Also, I attended the Tri-County Labor Council 29th Annual Labor Dinner and we presented certificates to many honorees and the main person was Senator Hannah Beth Jackson, received a special award for her efforts in the Senate in the state of California. Also, Michael, I want to thank, yesterday, you know, it was Boss's Day. I'm not the boss. However, you know, I just want to thank the CEO's office for, for having this potluck breakfast for, for all the bosses of Ventura County and upstairs especially. I want to thank all the people and it was just an excellent breakfast. They didn't have to do that, but there was no county money involved. It was just, they brought all this potluck food from their homes and I just want to thank them for excellent employees and it was just, I had a nice breakfast, I didn't have any lunch. Thank you. And I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list. Michael?
Thank you Chair Zaragoza. Yeah, thank you for recognizing the CEO family. They're a very generous, warm, warm crew. It was beautiful. I wanted to mention, your board has asked for an update on the fires, both up north and our local preparedness. So Chief Lorenzen will be here at 11 o'clock for that, the 11 o'clock item, and at that time, he can give you a brief update on, on how that all looks. I want you to know that this Thursday, October 19th, there'll be an Employee Health and Financial Wellness Fair right out here between the Hall of Administration and the Hall of Justice. You'll hear about county benefits, healthcare plans, county wellness program, free flu shots, healthcare agency screenings, fidelity investment advisors, the FICRIA Energy Rebate Program and First Time Home Buyer Program. So I really encourage all of our wonderful employees to take advantage of that, both the Health and Financial Wellness Fair this Thursday from 10 to 1. And then lastly, I'd just let you know, I had the privilege with our crew of attending the Ventura County Arts Council Art Stars Award for 2017. I was at the collection at Levity Live and congratulations to all the recipients, but also especially to our very own probation agency, which took home the public agency award, serving arts to youth. And, you know, as we hear every day, the probation folks, particularly in that juvenile facility, are turning lives around and that's one more way they do it. They do it with music, they do it arts, and it was really a special recognition. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, our next item is item 22, right, Brian? And this is the, the Department of Airports' Approval of Plans and Specifications for the Camarillo Airport Northeast Hangar Development Phase One. Todd?
Good morning Chair Zaragoza.
Good morning.
Members of the board and Chair, excuse me Chair, CEO Powers. My name is Todd McNamee and I'm Director of Airports for the county. This is a project that's been a long time coming, the northeast corner of the Camarillo Airport, development of storage hangars for small aircraft as well as commercial development coming soon after. Phase One includes 41 hangars as well as infrastructure that ties in from Los Poses Road that will serve Phase One but also be set up to serve Phases Two and Three. Phase Two being, oops, I'm just cranking through stuff. Hopefully your guys up there in the booth can get me set up. Sorry. What was the laser pointer I thought was obviously not? Anyways, the infrastructure will serve two future phases of hangar development. Sometime in the future, we'll build those when we have the demand and the funding available, but also a future commercial development that we anticipate going out with an RFP4 either later this year or early next. The hangars are sorely needed. We have about 130 people on a waitlist that equates to about a five-year wait to get into a county hangar. And at least one row of these, you can see the furthest to the left are box hangars, so those will accommodate some of the larger aircraft that have been on the waitlist for 10 years plus because we don't have current inventory that will hold those aircraft. We received two bids. The lowest responsible bid was from Toro Enterprise in the amount of $7.95 million. That's about 11 and a half percent over the engineer's estimate. We hope to do some value engineering with our contractor once we're underway to reduce that and a couple line items in particular. Our total cost for the project is $10.6 million. A quick breakdown on that is $1.6 million for utilities and drainage, $2.6 million for pavement improvements, that's taxi lanes in and around these new hangars, $4 million for the hangar buildings themselves, and then $2.4 million for design, environmental, construction management, and meeting certain FAA requirements. We did also receive two grants, one in the amount of $3.75 million from the FAA and $100,000 from Caltrans Division of Aeronautics. That's less than we're eligible from Caltrans, but due to a limited amount of funds within the Aeronautics Division, they capped all individual requests at $100,000, so we'll make that up through the enterprise fund. And our total spending out of the enterprise fund will be about $6.75 million. If you're available to answer any questions?
Thank you, Todd. And board members, just for information, Supervisor Long and I were at the Airport Authority last night and it was approved by the Airport Authority and also the Advisory Aviation Committee also endorsed it. So I'd like to, to make a motion that we approve this item.
Could I just ask a really layman's question? Because that's what I really am when it comes to this. These hangars are going to be put at the very edge of the landing strip, am I right?
So north of what's called the abandoned portion of the runway, yes.
So that is not needed? That area is not needed for landing?
No, 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 no.
I mean, that's what it looks like.
It's the northeast.
So you can see actually to the very left, the white stripe and the number 2.6, that's actually the landing threshold for the runway today. And that provides a 6,000-foot runway westernmost to keep airplanes as high as possible over the city of Camarillo on their way in. And so we do have what's called a runway protection zone that's standard for all airports and it actually goes just to the edge of where this development would occur. So all of this is outside of those protected areas for any normal runway environment.
Okay, so it's not used by the airplanes at all?
It's not, it would be used to taxis, so actually movement on the ground to get to the runway back and forth.
And, and that will be accommodated in a different design? You'll still accommodate that ability for them to taxi in turn?
Yeah, so you can see outlined in red sort of the path and there's a little image of a jet underneath the, the most eastern blue row of hangars. So that is what used to be a, used runway when it was the Air Force Base is actually the, what will be a taxi lane for aircraft to come and go from that area of the airport to the runway further down to the west. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Yeah, so it's incorporated as part of this design and the development.
It's a, it's a nice project.
If I could really quickly, I did want to make sure I thank my staff. I mean, I've got an awesome team in the Department of Airports that have moved this project along, in particular Ms. Erin Powers and her team with Al Colson and Tom Rooney in the Projects Department. They've done an outstanding job bringing this along.
And she did an outstanding job last night making the presentation there at the Airport Authority, even though Ruby was there next to her, but that's.
Is he telling you to ignore them?
Supervisor Long, are you okay?
You don't want to hear my comments. Because Todd and I struggled back and forth on, should we be building these? They're very expensive if we build them versus leasing the land out in private. So I struggle a little bit with this. I'm glad we're getting hangars, we need hangars. You've got all these planes sitting out there and I have a feeling that there'll be more people on the list. I talked to one guy, said, "I'm not getting everyone on that list because you'll never get a hangar." But, and maybe they'll do it, but the cost of these hangars is, is very high compared to if we had somebody else do it, but I guess we're not doing that. So what's, what's your expected date for completion?
So we hope to break ground sometime this calendar year and be occupied by the end of next year.
For Phase One?
On Phase One.
Okay. And then those commercial pieces for two, which is the future hangars, commercial development stuff, you said you're gonna go out for some bids. We're not, we're not gonna build, build those ourselves, somebody else will build those, right?
Correct, that'd be a long-term lease with private development.
Right. And those are hangars that are what size?
There is room for about 100,000 square feet of hangar and office space there in the northeast corner.
In that whole piece right there? Okay. All right, that's great. Okay, that's all.
But one of the benefits to Todd is that the infrastructure is gonna be paid by the FAA and also the Caltrans.
So we are, we're, we're receiving about 40 cents on, 40 cents on the dollar from the FAA and Caltrans Division of Aeronautics. So it does reduce our, our in-house spending, if you will. And the rent generated by renting out facilities versus a long-term land lease, we expect payback in 12 to 15 years. And then the revenue generation beyond that is far greater than that if it's just a simple land lease.
So the 40%, 40% help is really helping.
Yeah, well, they would, that would have been there anyway. It would have been done by then. But on the other side, 40%, if we get this lease, but then we're gonna be responsible for doors and things, we lease them out, you know. It's like, own the building, you respond, you know that, John.
Yeah.
Better than somebody else own or just manage the land like we do in the harbor.
But I, I think Todd's doing a really good job there, so.
Question?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
It's a great job.
So that.
Staff too.
Were approved? One more vote? Okay. Where's Mr. Bennett? Well, we need four? We're good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item, Michael, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, a little late person question or comment, more of a comment, just that getting FAA funds for runway projects is pretty common. You do a great job of that, like 95%, but for hangars, that's unusual, I think. Is that correct?
Thank you for sharing that, that's right.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. It is, it is unusual because it ranks very low on the FAA's priority in terms of maintaining runways and taxiways, but we were able to negotiate with the FAA in terms of our own local priorities, this being one of those projects for financial sustainability for the airport. being one of those projects for financial sustainability for the airport, to get these funds for the hangars, really the eligible parts, taxi lanes, drainage, things like that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Our next item is item 22, this is Approval of the Award of Construction Management Services Contract for the Northeast Hangar Development Phase One. Erin?
Thank you Chair Zaragoza, board members, Mr. Powers. The contract is for the construction management services to support the Northeast Hangar Development Phase One that Mr. McNamee just described. The contract will cover typical construction administration services, inspection, materials testing, storm water pollution plan, monitoring and compliance, some specific FAA tasks like weekly progress reports, as well as disadvantaged business enterprise goals and payment monitoring to subcontractors, and additionally, any mitigation measures that were identified through the environmental process. Approximately 50% of the contract, which is about $1.3 million, is eligible for reimbursement by the grant that we have, the grants that we have received. And as Chair Zaragoza had mentioned, on the construction service, or the construction contract, the authority and commission both recommended this for approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
And Erin, one of the things, too, that was asked by the board, there was other individuals that applied for the construction management, and they, this Mead and Hunt became the top individuals for that project.
That's correct. The airport undergoes a consultant selection process to identify our planning and our civil engineering firm for a five-year term. And in August of 2016, we completed that process, and we, for our civil engineering firm, there were, the top two contenders were selected through a committee process with airport staff and also a peer airport committee member that helped also make the decision on the firm to select for this time period. And Mead and Hunt is the selection.
Okay.
And thank you very much for all the work that goes into this, and therefore I motion to approve.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I know this is very serious. Do you always call them that at home? CEOs, Mr. Powers? Or he just says?
It's a request. I accommodate sometimes.
Oh, accommodate, okay.
Mr. Powers, I'll look forward to that.
And thank you for, you know, the board's support. I know that it's been, this has been years in the making, and there's been environmental documents and grant acceptances and approvals. So it's really been a county team effort, so thank you.
And I just want to mention to the board, you know, I've been on the airport board since I was a city council member, and I just want to commend, you know, the Airport Authority for doing an excellent job, you know, in all the projects you do. Ruby, Erin, and Todd. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I still think she's the boss.
Please vote.
No doubt about it. But when she told the boys that I was in charge of them last night, they said, "In charge of what?"
Okay, that's approved. Our next item, 24, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Monique Garcia back to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board.
I was just wondering if you have looked at whether she's interested in also her attendance? I know she has not been able to make meetings because of her work schedule.
It's a good point, because Jerry talked to me about that, and yes, you know, she was having some concerns with the Boys and Girls Club, but what she's going to do now is take vacation time, do that time to go out and.
I just want to make sure that she wanted to do that, because it has also been difficult to reach her to find out if she's coming to the meetings. So it's such an, so much emphasis on the amount of time, because they also have to, they have to be on a subcommittee, it's part of their bylaws. So not only do they have to attend the board meetings, they have to attend the subcommittee meetings.
I did talk to her, Supervisor.
Okay, good.
And did talk to her, and however, one of the things I mentioned to her, in the future if she finds that she cannot make it, let me know, so we can go ahead and have somebody help her out with it. But thank you for that. I did talk to her. Thank you.
Well, and on that note, Supervisor Parks, thank you very much for having all of them to contact us. I've had all of my asking about reappointment and so forth, and saying how much they enjoy being on the board. So, thank you.
And thank you for that. Okay, please vote. Somebody hasn't voted yet. There it is. Okay, thank you, that's approved. Let me see, what's her policy? Let me see, what else? Anything else out?
Can we do the, yeah.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, we'll take a nine-minute break. Okay, good morning, we're back from recess, and our next item is item 19. This is the, a resolution proclaiming the Retirement Security Week, and we have Patty Doughty. And I'm going to read this a little bit, and then, well, it says, this is item 19 proclaiming Retirement Security Week in Ventura County, October 15 through the 21st. Whereas the week of October 15 has been designated as the National Retirement Security Week by the United States Senate, whereas people in the United States are living longer and the cost of retirement is increasing significantly, Social Security remains the bedrock of retirement income for the great majority of the people in the United States, but was never intended by Congress to be a sole source of retirement income for families. As for recent data from the Employee Benefit Research Institute indicates that in the United States, only approximately three-fifths of the workers or their spouses are saving for retirement. And the amount that the workers have saved for retirement is much less than the amount needed to adequately fund their retirement years. Whereas savings for retirement is a key component of overall financial health and security during retirement years, and the importance of financial literacy is planning for retirement must be advocated. Whereas many workers may not be aware of the various options in saving retirements, or may not have focus on the importance of, and the need for savings for retirement, and successfully achieving retirement security. And whereas although many employees have access through their employers for defined benefits and defined contribution plans to assist employees in preparing for retirement, many of those employees may not be taking advantage of those plans at all, or to the full extent allowed by the federal law. Whereas savings for retirement is necessary even during economic downturns or market declines, which makes continued contributions all the more, more important. Whereas the county supports a goal and ideals of the National Retirement Security Week, including raising public awareness about the importance of saving adequately for retirement, and the availability of employer-sponsored retirement plans, and has long-sponsored Ventura County 401K Sheer Savings Plan, and also the County Section 457 Plan as a tax advantage and retirement savings vehicles to assist employees in saving for retirement. Now therefore be resolved, Ventura County Board of Supervisors hereby declares the week of October 15 through October 21, 2017, as Retirement Security Week, and Ventura County encourages all employees and the residents of Ventura County to increase their retirement savings. And we have?
Thank you. Good morning Chair. Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Good morning Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, CEO Powers, Patty Doughty, CEO's office. First, I would like to thank Supervisor Zaragoza for bringing this resolution to the board and declaring the week of October 15 as Retirement Security Week in Ventura County, to help raise awareness of the importance of saving for retirement for all county employees and residents of Ventura County. The US Senate proclaimed the week of October 15 through the 21st as National Retirement Security Week, to call upon employers to educate employees about the importance of saving for retirement for, or their financial future, encourage employees to take full advantage of their employer-sponsored plans, and to raise public awareness of the importance of saving for retirement. Public awareness is crucial, since as the resolution states, people in the United States are living longer, retirement is increasingly becoming more expensive, and people are not saving enough for their retirement years. And the reality is that people, in order to save for retirement, people are juggling a multitude of different priorities, sending kids to college, dealing with debt, retirement may not be their number-one priority. So to help provide the resources needed to manage these competing priorities, and to spread the importance of saving for retirement, finding that little piece of extra money for your financial future, the Deferred Compensation Program is once again joining forces with CEO Benefits Group, including the Health Benefits Plan, Wellness Program, and EAP for the Second Annual Health and Financial Wellness Fair, taking place this Thursday, as Mike so kindly announced earlier, this Thursday, October 19th, from 10 to 1. It's going to be in the courtyard between the Hall of Justice and Hall of Administration. Many county vendors out there, agencies, excuse me, the healthcare agency will have their mobile, mobile flu clinic, Deferred Compensation Program will be out there, obviously, Fidelity Wellness Program, EAP libraries will be out there, our animal services will be out there, because what we're focusing on is not just financial wellness, but all facets of employee wellness, the physical, financial, emotional, and their health plan information. All the healthcare providers will be out there, VCHCP, Anthem, to get those important health plan and open enrollment questions answered. So, again, Thursday, 10 to 1, there's going to be giveaways, raffles, it's going to be a good time. Corporate games will be out there, so hopefully you all can come out and join us. Thank you.
Patty, I want to thank you so much, you know, if you have, I invited Patty over to talk to my staff regarding retirement, regarding 401Ks and 457s, and did an excellent job. So for the rest of the agencies, if you want her to go over?
Promote me.
Is that okay? To talk about retirement is really, really important, but, and she did a good job and did an excellent job today. Thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
So I'm saving more money now because of you.
Oh, I'm glad to hear it.
This is your. This is your. How about your basket? Get your basket.
You're knocking out.
The other one that, thank you, Ben. The other one that we have here, this is item 20, and I'd like to call the, our DA's office, Greg Totten, Regina Rutherford, Michael Jump, Eric Sternan, and also Carolyn Sutton coming over. And I'm going to read this real quick. It says, this is proclaiming the October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of behavior in, with intimate relationships, when one person uses coercion and violence to gain power and control over their partner. And where domestic violence includes not only physical abuse, but also psychological, emotional, financial, sexual, and spiritual abuse. Whereas the law enforcement in Ventura County receives approximately 7,000 domestic violence-related costs annually. And whereas domestic violence, it was, is one of the most chronically under-reported crimes against females. And whereas working together, we can break the cycle of violence and build communities that are safe for everyone. Now therefore be resolved, in recognition of the importance of work done by local domestic violence programs, the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors thus hereby proclaim the month of October to be National Domestic Awareness Violence Month, and urges all citizens to actively participate in the schedule, and schedule activities and programs to work towards improving victims' safety and holding perpetrators of domestic violence accountable for their behavior. Mr. DA? Welcome.
Thank you very much. Actually, I think Caroline.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman Zaragoza. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Powers. We're very pleased to be here this morning with our partner agencies, the Ventura County District Attorney's Office, as well as Interface Children Family Services, to talk about Domestic Violence Awareness Month, to talk about the programs that are going on in this county, and what we are doing to reduce domestic violence in our county, and also be able to talk about prevention. My name is Caroline Pridgetel Sutton. I am the Executive Director of Coalition for Family Harmony here in Ventura County. And at Coalition for Family Harmony, we strive to provide exceptional services around the clock for victims of domestic violence, wherever they are in their journey towards safety. Last year, I informed you of the exciting new funding opportunity the Coalition received from CalOES to provide a really unique transitional housing program. And I'm very pleased this year to tell you that we have offered over 20 victims free rent for a year in our transitional housing program and climbing, to be able to support them in their journey towards safety. This is in addition to the over 70 that we have seen in our domestic violence emergency housing shelter. From the young mother who is escaping abuse, to the burn victim who needed a new place to call home, we are there to be able to provide them a new life, to save their life, and give them hope and freedom for their families. As with any nonprofit, our partnerships and collaborations are a key part of our ongoing work. This year, we are pleased that to be part of the District Attorney's Family Justice Center planning, as they launch this exciting approach to a survivor-centered services in Ventura County. We are always grateful for our partnerships with law enforcement, Ventura County probation, DA victim advocates, the medical community, and of course, our partner agencies such as Interface, who are also doing this important work. This past month, we co-hosted the Second Annual Domestic Violence Summit, and had the opportunity to highlight the work of Ventura County attorneys, advocates, nurses, and investigators as they presented on strangulation. The field of domestic violence advocacy and support is ever-changing. As an agency responsible for providing current and best practices, we thank you for your support and trust in us. As it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but we always encourage you to think about it year-round, we encourage you to wear purple, to check out our Facebook page and our website, and for informative videos to see what's going around the county. I also want to take this moment to highlight the work of our Housing Service Manager and our Shelter Staff here in Noel Stalcup, and also Laura Morales, who are here from our shelter, and have been doing this work for many years, and really see what's going on day in, day out with domestic violence. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, thank you. I'm Michael Jump, I'm Chief Deputy District Attorney with the Ventura County DA's office, and it is my privilege to oversee our Victim Services and Community Outreach Division. There's a lot of exciting work that's happening there on the issue of domestic violence, and I just wanted to take this brief moment to ask our advocates who are out here to stand up. Stand up, stand up. These folks are the real heroes in this room. They hear thousands of stories every year about domestic violence, and they deal with that tragedy by helping to transform those situations from sadness and chaos into hope and healing. And they do it by listening, they do it through crisis counseling, they do it by helping people connect with folks like Interface and the Coalition to receive services, and they really do a commendable job. I did want to highlight something in the proclamation resolution today, that really is salient for everybody here, as we deal with homelessness as a larger issue. Whereas among families of domestic violence, there is, they are the third leading cause of homelessness. That is a huge number. And we think about homelessness coming from a variety of different causes, but we can't forget this one. It's very important. People are displaced because they can't go home, because the abuser is still out there, and so they're sleeping in cars with their children. This is an incredibly important issue that we're all here working to resolve, and so I appreciate the support of the board in trying to resolve that as well. At this time, I'd like to also introduce somebody who is a survivor of domestic violence, and an inspiration to me and to many others. Her name is Regina Rutherford, and she is the Chair of our Voices Group.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. As Mr. Jump said, I am the Chair of the Voices of Ventura, and I wanted to share with you a few words and also our mission statement. The mission of Voices of Ventura County is to raise awareness about domestic violence, sexual assault, elder abuse, human trafficking, and child abuse within our community. Voices is led by brave survivors who come together to share their stories of strength, courage, and empowerment, as a way to be voices for those who don't yet have one. Our goal is to provide support, education, and resources to victims, survivors who have been impacted or affected by violence within their lives, and encourage them to share their stories of hope as an inspiration for others. How are we going to do all this? Well, along with our community and law enforcement partner agencies, and many other committed partners, we are working towards establishing a family justice center in our community. The FJC will provide a collaborative, supportive, and efficient environment as our victims become survivors. Your proclamation today strengthens our voices and supports our efforts. survivors. Your proclamation today strengthens our voices and supports our efforts to achieve this goal. As a reminder of our efforts, please take this small gift as a token of our appreciation, and on behalf of the Voices of Ventura County, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Board, and Mr. Powers. Thank you very much. Eric Sternad, Executive Director at Interface Children Family Services, thank you for having us all here, and I think you've heard some different voices here, pun intended, to really highlight the partnership that we have, all of us working together for these issues. So this is urgent work that our different agencies have all been working on for decades, and what I'd like to focus us on is really thinking about where we go from here, because yes, we're responding every day to victims that have been victimized, but we really want to turn our attention towards prevention and towards really engaging the community. So I want to just talk about two things that are happening. There is a neat campaign that's going on across the county. There are a few of us who are participating. We have a fingernail painted purple.
Be one of Eric.
Exactly. I have actually came with little supplies too, so you can pick your color. If you're game, we're going to pass these around, and you guys can paint a fingernail purple for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's something that's actually was started by a community volunteer, a board member at Interface. She's here with us, Kathy Hartley. So where's Kathy? There's Kathy. So Kathy is a business owner, locally started a regional advisory board, and they really took off with this idea. They've been presenting to colleges, high schools, at the Art Walk, high school football games, Ojai Farmer's Market. Pepperdine is doing a sorority and fraternity campaign, so it's really kind of taking off. And the whole idea, again, is to say to our public, we can't expect victims to come forward and talk about these urgent needs if we're not willing to talk about it ourselves. And this is a great conversation starter. I can tell you, I've had conversations in a machine shop with a bunch of grubby guys who thought I banged my finger, and I said, no, let's talk about domestic violence. So that's how it works, so we hope you can participate with us in this campaign. The second thing I'd like to say is just about how important and productive prevention can actually be. Between the Coalition and Interface, we're in front of about 2,500 to 3,000 teens every year, teaching them about relationship violence. It may be shocking to know that in ninth grade, fully 8% of these kids come forward to say they've already experienced an abusive interpersonal relationship. That's 8% at grade nine. And then we know that the national statistics tell us that it's about 30% of young people that have experienced an abusive relationship. So to our minds, it's quadrupling in the high school years. That's why it's so critical that we're getting to these youth early, helping to set different frames for what those relationships can look like. I can speak confidently for all of us here, we would be more than happy to be out of a job, wouldn't we, if we could just change this and really prevent it from happening in the first place. So that can't happen alone. We can't do it, but here you have all these partners. We're all galvanized doing this work together, and now we're trying to engage the community, and maybe you can help us do that with a little fingernail painted purple if you're willing. So thank you again for helping us to highlight this publicly, and again, from all of us at Interface, we've got a number of our wonderful staff here who do this hard work every day. We would really like to thank all of our partners because we love doing this work, and we can't do this work without that partnership. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. DA, you want to, a couple of words?
One of the things we know is that in America, we build our criminals in the home. Young people who are exposed to violence either as victims or as witnesses in the home are profoundly impacted for the future, and we are committed, this team, this partnership, is committed to addressing this issue in a way that impacts us generationally for the positive. Your board has always been very, very supportive of our efforts, and indeed all of the partnership's efforts to address domestic violence. We have great hope and promise now. We think if we can bring a family justice center here to Ventura County, we're arm-in-arm in this effort. We want to make a difference that impacts crime for the future and for future generations. So I thank you. I thank you for recognizing this important public and social and criminal justice issue that we have, and we look forward to working together as we move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for those words.
And I want to thank you on behalf of the board, Regina. Thank you for sharing. You know, it's really important that we share that information because there is a lot of domestic violence out there, and I want to thank the whole board and all of you. And members, like to share anything, and then we'll take a photo.
Yes, I would just like to say thank you very much. In Camarillo, we have three domestic violences that ended up in death. It did affect our schools in which the kids that night were texting each other, trying to figure out. So it does not only just affect the spouse, but also the family and the friends and the community. This is a very simple thing to do and causes so many different conversations. So I appreciate, I've worn this quite a few, two years now is what I understand, and it's great because this is not something that we want to talk about, but if your friend needs to talk about it, it's a good thing. And I have friends that we've had those conversations, and don't be afraid of talking about it, and I appreciate the awareness of everything on this. Thank you.
Other board members, Michael?
I just also want to echo Kelly's point and the fact that something like domestic violence doesn't have demographic boundaries, you know, whether you're in an affluent community or you're in a lower-income community, this is something that goes across the spectrum, and just really appreciate your bringing this to light, and I've got my purple finger too.
No, I just, Greg, you're right. We grow these people in our homes. This is the big key that we've got to understand. When it gets to this point, you guys are doing unbelievable work. We've got to figure out how to stop the other part. So thanks for what you do.
And when kids are learning about relationships, it's a great time to get them, put them on a good path for life. And Regina, just thank you for your courage in sharing here today. So one thumb up.
Regina, this is yours or whose is it?
Yes.
I just do what they tell me.
We do what you tell us.
Come on, come on.
at 11 o'clock, and any announcements when we get back?
There may be an announcement.
Okay, we're going to convene our Board of Supervisors meeting for October 17th, and the next item we have is item 21. Item 21 is the approval of the purchase by the County of Ventura, a 22.147 acre parcel of real estate property identified as a portion, accessory parcel number 2300-030-085 in the city of Camarillo from the County of Ventura Community College, BCT. Okay?
Good morning, Chairs Zaragoza, members of the board, CEO Powers. Do you want me to go through the whole thing again?
Well, you can share a little bit.
So we are going to, on behalf of the Fire District, purchased 22.147 acres at the Camarillo Airport from the Community College District. Before we approved that purchase, though, we're asking the board to amend an existing lease between the Community College District and the Fire District from 2004, then approve the purchase, a lease back for three years, short-term, for the Community College District to store materials until they can build a replacement structure, a 30-year site use agreement. This formalizes an agreement or a use between the Community College District students, Fire District students, and the Fire District's Fire Training Center. And then in the purchase agreement, we're asking the board to waive their policy for escrow instructions, attorney's fees. Again, the escrow companies will not remove that from their escrow instructions. We're also accepting a restrictive covenant on one acre of that property and the responsibilities for monitoring and reporting those results to the state. This is a result of the Air Forces' use of the property long ago and nothing that the Community College District did. The property was appraised for $9.6 million. We agreed on a purchase price of $9,450 based on our obligation to continue to report, and in recognition of the Fire District allowing the Community College District students to continue to use the Fire Training Center for a long period of time.
Okay. Any questions, Supervisors?
No, I just want to say thank you very much. I know that's in our district, but it is a county-wide facility that is used every single day, and it is a fabulous resource for us. So thank you to the Ventura County College District to do that. And then also, I am looking forward to seeing what you're going to do with the nine-plus million. I'm excited. Education is great. We have wonderful locations in Santa Paula, Oxnard, Ventura, Moore Park, so I know we'll be seeing some great things to come. So thank you.
Before, I would like to thank Vice Chancellor David Alfital, who throughout the process, although he came late, recognized this was two public agencies trying to do something that benefited both of us, and although it's a lot of agreements, he was very helpful in allowing us to bring this to a conclusion.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, okay. And the second, Mark, do you want to share anything?
I do have a question. I know in the past, we've looked at a site in that location that had some radionuclides, and seeing that we're purchasing this, we'll be responsible for the pollution that's there, or is that taken care of by?
Again, there's a restrictive covenant in favor of the Department of Toxic Substances for the state. The covenant says that we can do anything on the property that doesn't involve children under the age of 18. If you put down a vapor barrier, you can build over the top of it. There are structures on top of the area or right near it right now. It's been being used for a long time. There have been a lot of people walking over it for a lot of years, and the State Department of Toxic Substances have said that there's no health hazard to humans. They are, again, cautious with children under the age of 18. This can eventually go away. The termination is made that the money, additional money spent trying to clean this up will not result in a significant reduction in the materials that are there. It is better to just let it naturally attenuate through the soil.
So the question I had is specific to will we be required to do cleanup as a result of the land that's being purchased?
Again, the termination has been right now that it's a closed site with the exception of we continue to monitor and report to the state.
Thank you, thank you. Mark, I know you've been, you're probably happy, our chief, you know, because it's been going on forever, and our college trustees, any comments, Perez? You guys are happy because like the Supervisors say, you're picking up $9.7 million. Okay, so, Mike?
Oh, I just want to say thank you to Chief Lorenz and the College District, Fernando. Long time coming, complicated deal, it's great to get to this point. So thank you for hanging in there, Keith. Great job as always.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, let's vote. Okay, and that is approved. Michael?
Chief, you were going to give just a brief update if you could, please. Thank you.
An update on the fires, I think, is, yeah. So we want to thank the school board, College members for being here.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the last item. Obviously, we're very excited to move forward on the Regional Training Center. Members of the board, Mr. Powers, for the record, Mark Lorenzen, County Fire Chief, I know you guys had a public speaker this morning and a couple of comments on the fires, so I figured it would be a great time just to update you on the status of the fires in Northern California. We have a number of resources. When I say "we," it's the collective county. We have nine of our engines, and overall countywide, we have 18 fire engines up there and some overhead folks up in Santa Rosa, Napa area. I mean, they have been tirelessly working up there. Obviously, you see it on the news every day. It's been an absolutely devastating fire up there. Our hope is, is at some point in time, the weather changes. I know they have at least a short window right now where the weather has improved significantly, and they're trying to get the upper hand on it, and hopefully we'll be getting our resources back. But as that goes, I just want to talk to you briefly about our preparedness here, and also give you guys the reassurance that every time we send engines out here, it doesn't leave a gap here behind them. We immediately refill and backfill our fire stations behind them. So even though we send out nine engines, we immediately put out the call to all of our members to report back to duty and fill the fire stations that we just left. We have reserve apparatus at every fire station that we can staff up, and so we really don't leave any gaps or holes, and we are always concerned with preparing to protect our communities here. There were some concerns. I know that question came up in the Santa Monica Mountains, and we are as prepared as we have ever been, and the county here is probably more prepared than most, and that's not just our efforts through the county and our defensible space programs and the equipment we have. It's also the partnerships that we have through Sheriff and OES, and just the plethora of ways we have to contact the public through reverse 911 and other methods to notify the public in the event of an emergency like this. We know up in the Northern California fires, there was little to no time, a lot of people didn't receive notifications. So we are adequately prepared, adequately staffed. We're also fortunate that we have a giant resource in the form of LA City and LA County directly to our south, and when we had the Springs Fire four years ago, that was very significant in our ability to respond, and we recognize that as evidenced by the almost 10,000 firefighters up in Northern California. No one single community can address those issues all by themselves, and of course, as part of the California Fire Service, we don't do that. So I fully expect if we have something down here, which I hope we don't, that we'll see a response that's at least equal to or greater than the response that happened up north. We do have, as you've seen it, winds coming in last weekend. We had some significant winds. We actually staffed up a number of additional resources when those come, and again, we have some more winds coming in on Monday. Cool right now Monday, the winds start blowing again, and we will staff back up additional resources at the time. So I am very confident that we're more than adequately prepared for whatever comes our way.
Thank you, Chief. We have, I think, Foy, then Long, and then Mark.
Mark, I just, to give some confidence, a lot of questions people asking about there, and I don't want you guys to make this political, so be careful in what I say here, because we do a good job, even though we've got the same open space issues Sonoma County has, we do a better job managing our open space in the sense of there's cattle grazing. I know up there where they have, you can't touch it and you leave it. So if the same thing happened, big winds, we wouldn't quite have the same issue that they have up there where that fuel was just in places.
You're very right, and I mean, it's a little bit political, but your board has shown the political will to actually go out and sometimes enforce things that feel a little bit intrusive in our defensible space program, but it has time and time again proven to be incredibly effective in defending our communities. And there are almost no other communities in the state of California that have those same requirements that we do and the compliance rates that we do. So that same thing does not get repeated here. We have some challenging areas, probably the Malibu fuel bed is our most challenging, just because people don't live in a big line of homes, and you need one engine truly to protect each home there. And in our truly hardened communities, you can have one engine protect almost the whole neighborhood because of the building construction and the defensible space and the water supply systems.
And I think those are the kind of comments people need to hear, because they say, I know we're doing the same, but it's not the same thing. We do a lot of things different.
It's not the same.
Where I've been up in, because I grew up in that area, my high school burned down, I got lots of neighbors, friends, their houses were burned down, everything. I know that area, and those people, kind of like we saw in Modestito, where the houses, the trees grow right to the houses, the stuff grows, and that's the kind of thing you see. And even the open space where they have some, you just can't touch it, where we But we do a lot of other things to try to keep that fuel down.
Right. Supervisors, Long, and then Parks.
Well, and thank you for coming today. I know I asked this in comments, and I really do appreciate it because I think our constituents need to know. And, you know, my concern, we have a lot of agriculture, a lot of open space, Lockwood Valley and so forth. So, making sure that we have those network of fire stations to help us is great with Kern. They were in the paper of talking about with Fraser Park, working harder to get out there and so forth. So, LA County, I just appreciate the partnerships and the continuation of making sure that our community is safe. So, thank you.
Supervisors, Parks.
I just also want to thank you and your department and always there when we need you. Just wondering if there are things that you recommend that we can do to make it safer? For example, the people out in Malibu are all ears.
Got it. Thank you. So, and one additional comment, I will say, as we send these resources out, just know that we are good financial stewards, and we do get reimbursed fully for all of our costs when we send these resources.
So, Chief, I understand also that the cities are also contributing, the cities of Oxnard, Ventura...
They are. They've got, of the 18 engines, nine of them are from the other city agencies.
Yeah, so. I mean, you've seen this, it's going to keep going. There's a lot of fires. I did see some 70% contains, they're getting some pretty good up there.
The majority of the fires in Northern California are all over 50% contained, which usually indicates that they have a pretty good handle on it.
Yeah.
Okay, Chief. Well, thank you so much, and I personally want to thank you again for the promotional ceremony you had the other day in Sierra.
Thank you for coming and speaking.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we did the motion. So, then, we're going back to the closed session. Leroy, any announcements?
And there may be an announcement.
And, okay, so, we'll go from there. We're going to closed session. Okay, we're back from closed session, and Leroy, we have an announcement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's an announcement out of closed session. It's Item 26 on the agenda. Yes, 26. And the Board of Supervisors authorized staff to file an unfair labor practice charge with the Public Employment Relations Board against SEIU Local 721, and the vote of the board was five to zero. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we are going to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.